Good evening, everyone. My name is Aaron Tuckfield. I'm the chairperson of the zoning board of appeals. The time is 6:30. The date is December 2nd, and I am going to call this regularly scheduled meeting to order. Our first order of business is the called order. I'm going to move us on to the second order of business, which is the pledge of allegiance. If you could stand with me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Ms. Lawson, could you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. We'll start with Member DeCoster.
Here.
Member Piper.
Here.
Chairman Tuckfield.
Here.
Member Slosson is here, and our newest member, Member DeBruin.
Here.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Lawson. And I will note for the record, I'm not sure if this is something we're going to do, but we have two alternates available. We are not using any alternates tonight. This is our full-time board with us this evening. Next, we're going to move on to item four, which is addressing any conflicts of interest at this time. We're going to do another roll call. If you have a conflict of interest on the item before us this evening, please signify by saying yes. If you have no conflict of interest, please signify by saying no. Ms. Lawson, please call the roll.
Yes, I will start with myself. Member Slosson, no. Chairman Tuckfield?
No.
Member DeCoster?
No.
Member DeBruin?
No.
Member Piper?
No.
Very good. With item four having been completed, we'll move on to the approval of the agenda. Is there any motions this evening on this agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I will move to accept the agenda as presented.
Support?
Very good. Motion by Mr. Piper, supported by Ms. Lawson. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. This moves us on to the approval of the previous meeting minutes. And I think I might have an outdated agenda here, but I believe we have two sets of minutes to look at this evening. Is that correct, Mr. Box?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. I think I had them up here. Let's start with, it would be our first regularly scheduled meeting in November. Is there any motions on that set of minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to accept those minutes.
Very good. Motion by Mr. Piper, is there support?
Support.
Support by Ms. Lawson. I'm trying to get the date here so I can actually call it out. It would have been the first meeting, the first Thursday of November. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying nay.
I would abstain because I wasn't a member of the board at that point.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. DeBruin. There'll be four voting for, and for the record, Mr. DeBruin abstained because he had not been a member of the board at that point. Next on the agenda, we have the special meeting that was held on November 17th. Is there any motions with regards to this set of minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the November 17th meeting.
Motion by Mr. DeCoster, support by Mr. DeBruin. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. All right. With the approval of the previous meeting minutes being completed, we're going to move on to old business. We have old business from our first meeting in November. This would be item 7A, variance request in the zoning ordinance, section 10.1603B33A. And this would be for permanent parcel 0836452022. Michael Utuma is the petitioner. Mr. Box, could you bring us up to speed on this, please?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. This is an item that you saw at the last, well, the last regular scheduled meeting, and it was tabled pending the rezoning of the property. That property was, in fact, rezoned as C2 as of the board meeting on November 23rd, 2021. The site is vacant, and the applicant intends to develop the property as a gas station or convenience store, as well as have a drive-through business on the property. The applicant is requesting a variance from the ordinance, which requires a 300-foot setback of the call box from residential properties that are neighboring this property. The initial request was for 113 feet. They did give us before the last meeting an updated version that I'll have up here in a minute that actually pulled it back to 133 feet, so they pulled it about 20 feet further Internal review, fire, had no objection, as did assessing with regards to planning. You know, we did note that the property is kind of in a regular shape. The width of the property, so it's required to have 300 feet. There is nowhere on the property that has 300 feet away from the residential neighborhood that 300 feet is, would put you in the middle of Grashit. So getting to 300 feet would not be possible on this property. But we did have concerns that noise produced by the call box unless, you know, heavily screened may result in some unfair justice from the point of view of the neighbors. As well, engineering, water and sewer, they didn't have any general concerns. It didn't violate any of their standards. But they did note that additional sound deadening measures should be required if granted. So again, I think the consensus was that some type of noise deadening or noise reduction should be required if you feel the desire to approve this variance. As 133 feet, obviously, it violates the ordinance, so it is getting pretty close. And again, so here is the drawing that they did provide right before the last meeting that does show it 133 feet now from the property line. One other thing I did want to note, I got a message from a resident today who could not be here, Ms. Arlene, I apologize if I'm saying her last name wrong, Rizuski. She couldn't be here this evening, so she wanted us to note that she has been living in the township for 45 years and does not support the variance request. She believes that there are larger parcels that are more appropriate and that are available that could house a development such as this. She believes the residences are too close and that the call box and the business will disrupt the health of the elderly that are nearby, specifically the smell of gasoline.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Box. Is there any question for Mr. Box from the board? Mr. Box, I did just have one, just a question of form. Once the Board of Trustees approves the change in rezoning, how long does it take for it to go into effect?
I want to say 15 days, but it might be different than that. Mr. Lloyd, do you know off the top of your head?
When does it go into effect?
Yeah, it has to be.
The variance?
It's not necessarily from, not the variance, he's talking about the rezoning. It's not from when they approved it, it's from when we advertise the fact that it's approved.
That's correct.
But I think it's 15 days from when we advertise it, and I don't have that date in front of me.
That's correct.
So the action has been completed to rezone it.
Correct.
It's possible the paperwork may not be fully completed yet.
It's possible. For the purposes of this board, it's been rezoned.
It's been rezoned. Okay. Just wanted to make sure I understood where it was in the process. Okay. If there's no further questions for Mr. Box, I'll bring it to the petitioner. Mr. Coster, go ahead.
I do have one question. Thank you. At the last meeting, we discussed other properties, and some of the residents brought up other properties along Hall Road, I think even Grashit, that had call boxes adjacent to residential properties. We talked about, is there any history with those properties, were their variances requested and approved?
There are not. So there are two properties where a call box along Hall Road is within 300 feet of the adjacent residences. One would be the Dairy Queen, the other being the Wendy's. Both of those are controlled by a consent judgment. They were not approved in this fashion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coster. Any other questions? If you're not, I'm going to go out to the petitioner. Sir, if you could, please state your name and address for the record and give any comments you may have.
Vito Pampalona, Pampalona Construction Management, 850 West University Drive, Suite D, Rochester, Michigan, 48307. A couple of things I would like to note. The last time that we came in here, we offered some substantial screening in regards to vegetation, deciduous trees, pine trees, and gave a white paper on the decibel level of the noise. You should also be aware that when this was an MDOT property, if you see the radius that backs up to those residents there, that was an off-ramp for Grashit. So those houses there were backing up to what was the off-ramp from Grashit to Hall Road way before we came along and decided to want to develop this property. So there was the noise impact there previously. Once that was vacated, then the land went vacant for several years, and obviously, they enjoyed, you know, having that vacant piece of property behind their house. But previously, that was an off-ramp for MDOT. So it's not like we're taking a, you know, blank canvas piece of property and just creating a bunch of noise. There was noise there prior to us coming along, and arguably, Hall Road, I mean, if you look at the noise level on Hall Road itself, I mean, it's going to be noisy there. We can't develop this into anything else. We can't put residential here, and that was one of the main reasons why we went C2. We think it lends to a gas station, it helps the community, as well as the retail does there. And that being said, we're also willing to work with the residents and you guys in order to make sure that the landscaping is done properly, and there's enough of it there to make sure that everybody's happy. We don't want a bunch of angry neighbors back there, and we're not here to try and make that happen. What we're trying to do is we're trying to make sure that what we're providing is good for the township, and it's good for them, and also good for us. I mean, I would also like to note that if the talk box, we moved the talk box back. Let's say the talk box just doesn't, we just decide not to do it, right? And we put a retail unit on the end of the gas station there. Well, what that's going to do is that's going to take away a considerable amount of landscaping that we are adding in order to get the talk box approved. So we would only be governed under the landscaping ordinance, in which that ordinance is considerably less landscaping and trees than what we're providing in this picture here.
Go ahead, and if you could, please state your name and address.
Jason Police with the Emler Group. Apologize for being late, I got caught in traffic. So there's the four, as we discussed last time, there's the four requirements to go forward with approving a variance. Josh talked eloquently about how we met those requirements previously. I just want to quickly go through it, that, you know, we don't have a spot where we can be 300 feet away from a residential property. This site is C2, you know, we were waiting, originally wanted to wait for a decision based on the rezoning. At that point, we've, the rezoning has been approved to C2. But the second item is, would it do justice to the applicant? Yes. C2 is typical for this type of property, where, you know, adjacent to Grashit and Hall, two very busy properties, as Vito mentioned. This wouldn't be suited for residential or any other type of development. It's other C2 zoning, call boxes are, could be included. And then also, the third item is, is the relaxation substantial. We looked at actually having multiple, multiple drive-throughs, multiple call boxes, and we eliminated a call box. We moved the call box to between the two buildings and moved it further from the residence. We still had to maintain stacking requirements, but we moved it the furthest distance we The fourth item to grant the variance is, is the spirit of the ordinance observed. We feel the technology itself at that call box is significantly improved from other call boxes. We're looking at, if you look at the four dealership across, they have four blow horns, megaphones on the corners of the buildings to project out over acres of property. This call box is designed for two- to four-foot interaction, and it's, the technology has changed from analog to digital, and the filtering process is significantly improved. Hopefully, if you've had a chance over the last month to, you know, to go to these new McDonald's with the double drive-throughs and listen to the clarity and how much more quieter the call boxes are, you know, the ordinance doesn't consider technology, it looks at just specifically a distance versus all the other factors that, look at, you know, decibel trespass over a property line. So I know we're not acoustical engineers, you know, we talked about that, but we've all stood behind a speaker and stood in front of a speaker. So the angle of the speaker is very important, the type of speaker is very important, and then we're also, really, the vegetation is, in addition to meeting the spirit of the ordinance. We're going to provide another wood fence around that call box with vegetation, to also provide some dampening of the decibel level. And then we provided that decibel chart for how that 85 max decibel level dissipates back down to 65. They're anticipating, talking to the provider of the call box, about a 65 ambient decibel level at Grashit and Hall. So that's where we're maxing at 85, and then with the automated voice control, as that goes down at night, then that decibel level goes down as well. But it's a maximum 85. And so if you look at OSHA requirements, you can listen to 85 decibels 24 hours a day, seven days a week, there's no safety concerns. We also have the six-foot masonry wall at the property line for an additional level of protection against the decibel levels. So in conclusion, you know, the additional measures are shown, and then we revised the plan from the initial recommendation letter, as well to increase that additional 20 feet, one more stacking space, added the wood fence. We've met the requirements for the ZBA, the four requirements. The unique circumstances of this property require that the additional measures were taken, we took those measures, and granting of this approval would provide substantial justice to the property owner and allow the development, you know, proper consistency with the C2 zoning. We respectfully request your support in granting approval of this variance.
Can I add something real quick?
Go ahead.
This is actually like the sixth iteration of this layout here. So it's not like we just went and drew up one or two layouts and were like, okay, we're just going to come in with that. We've been working on this for a while now, and we've been in and out of the township, and we've tried to put our best foot forward. Like Jason said, we had not a substantially different plan, but it was more impactful to the residents in the very beginning. We've actually scaled it back through those iterations in order to make sure that, you know, we were taking their considerations.
Any questions from the board?
I've got some questions. Go ahead, Mr. DeBruin. The trees, you mentioned the trees, Vito.
Yes, sir.
You said deciduous, but I want to make sure we're clear. Did you mean deciduous or non-deciduous? Are they going to be shedding their leaves through the, in the winter?
So what we're going to do with that, it's a great question. We're going to add pines there, so what we want to do is, if you can, if you see like where the black dots are.
Right, the round balls.
Yeah, correct. And what we'll do is ultimately, we will submit a landscape plan that meets the ordinance, and then also meets the requirements of the ZBA in regards to plantings. So we're not just going to go plant a bunch of maples that shed their trees, we're actually going to line that with herbivites, we're going to go in and do white pines, probably some Norway spruce, a lot of trees that aren't going to die or have any type of insect problems that eventually would die.
And are non-deciduous.
Yeah, we also, we looked at too, if you look in between where the trees are and the decorative wall, at one point, we looked into berming that area, but what we didn't want to do was, we didn't want to burn the area and then have an issue where there'd be standing water behind in the neighbor's yards. So what we basically came up with was this row of trees that you see here, and we will end up, and we can put it into the minutes as well, there is a neighbor that her house is elevated, I think it's in the top left corner, it should be the northwest corner there. We're willing to add trees and pines there that, you know, would meet a height requirement if we had to put 18 to 20-foot pines there in order to block her out so that she can't see in. We're willing to do that as well. I mean, we're open to working with them and you to make this, you know, good for the community in a whole.
Then I believe I read this in the proposal, but is there proposed hours of operations for this call box?
We, if it's approved, we would like to keep it from 7 to 8, and we think that it's not 24 hours. We think past that time is, Hall Road calms down as it is right now, you know, towards that hour. So 8 o'clock would allow us to have the, you know, the breakfast business, as well as, you know, the, you know, 5 to 7 PM business when people are coming home from work if they want to stop and get something to eat.
That's all I have, Aaron. Mr. DeBruin? Anything else for petitioners? Mr. Coster?
No, I think I'm good for the petitioner.
Couple clarifications for me, and maybe I should have remembered this from the last drawing. So you're describing a fence that would be an L, an L or a straight line out from the wall, or can you describe where the fences around the call box a little more?
It's an ALCO fence. So the call boxes are about this wide, right? And they're maybe six feet tall. They're about, you know, shoulder height when you're sitting in your car is where the actual digital, there is really no speaker on them now, it's just a digital box that they talk out of. The actual screening is going to be curved, and what it will be is a wood wall, and then that will have herbivites behind it. So any noise that would, you know, basically come from that area would be kicked back towards the building. So you can see that circle there? So that circle is the max area from which you would hear noise coming out of that talk box.
Yeah, the wood would actually absorb the sound more versus a brick.
Because it absorbs it as opposed to bouncing it.
Correct.
And then to confirm, there's a shape to the cone, so you would, you are proposing to put the call box roughly pointed northeast?
Correct. Correct. So you'll see underneath, you'll see, I guess it kind of, you can see the circle, and then you see the smaller circle. So that is where we're projecting sound.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. And Mr. Box, I did have a question. Obviously, they've gone through their presentation. You mentioned in your recommendations that your department might not be comfortable recommending it without additional landscape screening. Is that including what they're showing us this evening, or was that previous to that?
Well, I think the, some type of wall or fence behind, directly behind the speaker box is what we were envisioning being added, which it sounds like they are adding that. I know they handed out some documents last time they were here, I don't know if you have those in front of you, but in their own documents, you know, there's guidelines that say do and don't, one of which says, don't rely solely on vegetation to reduce the sounds. That's why we felt like, you know, even their own document says, don't just rely on vegetation. So something directly behind the speaker box to push the sound the opposite direction. And to his point where he's got it kind of angled to the northeast, another one on here says, do not face the speaker box directly towards the busy streets, which they're not. It's slightly askew. It's close, but it's slightly askew. When you, you know, he mentioned that the digital versus analog, and it's kind of controlled by a computer, as that senses the higher ambient sound from Grashit, it's going to make their volume go up. So keeping it not turned straight to Grashit is actually helping it, that you don't want it straight to Grashit because it's going to force the volume of the speaker box to get turned up.
So just to make sure I'm clear, you may not want to speak to it since you were looking at drawings tonight, but are you, would you modify your recommendation based on what they provided, or do you have enough information to do that?
Yeah, if there's some wall or screening projecting the sound away from the residents directly behind the speaker box, I think that satisfies our concerns.
Okay. And then a couple of other procedural questions. First one being, this would have to, if approved, and if they move forward as they are projected to, this would require a special land use, correct?
Correct.
We're talking about landscaping here, there's a lot of elements to it. Are we, if the board wanted to approve this variance, are we better off leaving an outline of what we're looking for as far as landscaping and leave specifics up to the special land use, or do you think we're better off stating those things as part of the variance? And I don't know if Ben wants to chime in on this as well.
Go ahead, Josh. I mean, my thought is, the more you can outline specifically, the better. For the sake that you're punting to the planning commission to make a variance decision, if that makes sense.
Well, I guess my concern would be that if there is a practical difficulty, the practical difficulty is there regardless of the landscaping. The landscaping is there to try to bring it more in compliance with the spirit of the ordinance. And my concern would be that they get to a site plan situation, and the site plan changes, or they're maybe not tied, but it becomes difficult because of a fixed point. If you prefer any conversation that going with the variance, I'm fine with it, I just want to make sure that that's what you think would be practical.
I think, yeah, you don't want to overthink this. The fact of the matter is, at this point, they're requesting a variance. You have the opportunity to do that and put certain conditions. If those conditions are the vegetation, that is the time, the time is now to do that. The planning commission will not be weighing that same issue, so I think the time is now if you want certain conditions in there that might be, you know, to enhance the landscaping or other things, if that's what you choose.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. All right. I think that's all the comments I have for the moment. We're going to take it out to the public next. Please bear in mind that we have four minutes. I think I misspoke last time everyone was here. Mr. Parkinson was good enough to correct me. When you get to the podium, please make sure you state your name and address for the record. And just bear in mind that we typically don't answer questions at the point, so we're not trying to ignore you. We'll wait until we're done and try to answer anything that we think is pertinent to our discussion.
Okay, my name is Philip Zioli. I live at 24204 Darwin. This is my third time at one of these meetings, and I'd like to know, are we wasting our time, or have the campaign contributions already been spent? We've talked, nothing has gone our way. They talked about the cut pass-through that used to be there. Well, I've been there since 78. That was back when Grashit was three lanes and Hall Road was two lanes. Hall Road used to be where the median is now, two lanes. So they're saying there's going to be no difference? Do we look like a bunch of spring chickens? Why are you treating us this way? I went up, you know, there's a new strip mall right there by, next to the Dairy Queen? There's nine storefronts in there. This is a list of names on those storefronts. It's empty. Across the street in Liberty Plaza, there's two empty storefronts. I took a walk through Partridge Creek yesterday, there's 18 empty storefronts. So what's the solution? We're going to build more. We got two gas stations on that corner already, there used to be a third. What happened to the third one? He decided it wasn't worth his effort. Now, they keep on talking about a call box and a drive-through. For all we know, it's a drive-through marijuana dispensary. Nobody wants to say what it's there for. So like I said, are we wasting our time even being here? Have the decisions been made? Has the money been spent? This property is like the old adage, you're trying to put five pounds of manure in a three-pound bag. Get a bigger piece of property. There's seven homes that directly border that property, and one of them is a group home. Do we know how that is going to affect the people at the group home? No. What happens if they have a problem with it? Gas fumes, noise. You don't care about us. Prove me wrong. Just prove me wrong.
Anyone else?
My name is Norma Markwood. I live at 45325 Abington Circle.
Ms. Markwood, I hate to interrupt you, but we, the microphone goes up and down all night, if you could just pull it down. I just want to make sure we don't leave you off the record.
I'm sorry. I know, I apologize.
I'm sorry to mention it, I just want to make sure you get recorded.
Okay, thank you. And before I get started, I just want to let you know, there's like four gas stations within a half a mile area of our subdivision. Our own home is the third ranch off of Grashit on the south end of Abington Circle. So the backyard is about 100 foot deep, and it's fenced in. So if this proposal goes through, and this cement, six-foot cement wall is going to go up, it'll be 10 foot past our own fence in our backyard. Now, how is this going to stop noise from me? Because there's not- Because there, there's not going to be any shrubbery or anything going around where we live. And the gas station and the store and the drive-through call box, I mean, we're going to have a clear view of that out of our family room that we added on about twenty years ago because we put a lot of windows in it. And, um, I just don't think it's very considerate of the people of Macomb Township. And remember, this parcel is only like three hundred foot wide, and they're using every foot of it to fulfill their needs. And my concern is crime. Gas stations have a high rate of crime. And our sub has two hardcore, corner entrances, and we have what we call a so-called shortcut that comes from Grashit, and you can go through Fairchild. We're on a dirt road. It's very dark. We only have two, um, streetlights, and that's for Darwin, Barlow, Fielding, and Abington. So, there's only two. And there's plenty of places to hide in our big backyards because the original sub has terrific-sized lots. And there's many directions in which someone could jump over that little six-foot fence and just high-tail it through the subs and give the police a good chase. And not to mention the health hazard of living so close to a gas station, benzene being the big one, which causes birth defects, cancer, liver, and kidney disease. And my final, final thought is, what would actually, we've been there since nineteen sixty-nine. We've added on three times. We love it there. We love Macomb Township. And if this happens, and this property was going to be going to our son someday when we're gone, what's my house going to be worth? And who in the hell would even want to buy it? Thank you for listening to my concerns.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello. My name's Walter Sutherland. I live at, uh, four five three 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 Abington Circle. I'm right on the tip, the, the northwest tip of the property line there. I do like to mention, like, uh, Norma did, that there is no mitigation along that north wall. Nothing. I can see, my property line is set up a little higher than most. So, it's probably about four feet there. So, a six-foot fence only makes it two feet higher than coming straight across to my house. I'll be able to see, right then, I'll be able to see Grashit easy and Hall Road easy. I'll be able to tell how many cars come in and buy gas. But anyway, I was looking through, uh, some, some, uh, zoning board meetings, and I have here the minutes from the zoning board appeals meeting from, uh, May twelfth, twenty fifteen to reduce the distance of a call box from a Dairy Queen in the southeast corner of Twenty-Six Mile and Romeo Plank. Mr. Meager, the planning consultant, said it's, it is our finding that no particular difficulty, practical difficulty exists, and allowing such use would impact property values negatively. Based on the fact that there is no practical difficulty present negatively, uh, impacted property values and the potential to set a precedent for future drive-through services, we recommend denial of this variance request. Therefore, has, therefore has a precedent been set? And should it apply here? I have a copy of that here.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Also, I was, uh, reading through the Chronicle, and I noted Mr. Papalona had a little statement that was in there, said, uh, "Once the sound travels to the outside layer of the property, it will be, it will go down to an ambient level of cars on Hall Road." What, what's that ambient level?
Sixty-five.
Okay. He also states that each layer of vegetation cuts the sound down by twenty-five to fifty percent. Great. I got three hundred feet right now of vegetation. I can hear a radio on Hall Road. So, Jason Beals, I hope I'm pronouncing that right, sir, also said, "This site doesn't have any opportunity to put a call box on it." You know what? I agree with him. So, why are we even here? Say no to this variance, and that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Carol Sutherland, four five three three Abington Circle. This all sounds nice, but there's no guarantees that we won't hear the call box. And I find it disturbing if I'm going to hear a strange voice coming out of nowhere when I'm not expecting it. I feel that this call box, being so close to our residential area, will affect our property values and make it harder to sell our homes.
My name is David Harms. I live at two four two four oh Darwin. My house will back up to where the call box is. The other call boxes were brought up. I don't know if you're aware of it, but Dairy Queen, there is at least three hundred to four hundred feet to the homes. Wendy's, the call box is out front. It faces Hall Road. It doesn't face anything behind it. My bed, my, my master bedroom is on the southeast corner of this property. I mean, I have to work nights sometimes. I mean, changing the hours on the call box ain't going to help me if I'm getting home at seven in the morning and they're going to turn it on. Not only that, I mean, what about our safety? I mean, there is no other gas station I see around the township that is that close to homes. I mean, this, we had a bad accident ten years ago. A man got killed. Truck almost ended up in my backyard. Police chase. Somebody tipped them off on, on Grashit. What's to say this doesn't happen again? This gas station blows up? What's going to happen to us? I mean, there's a lot of ifs. They say they're going to do this. They say they're going to do that. When they do it, what happens if it doesn't work? I mean, I still have to live there. I've lived there almost thirty years. I mean, I'm not looking forward to retirement with this going on. I mean, it's, I just, I question the whole process. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I forgot to bring up one thing.
Uh, sir, I-
Am I out of order already?
Well, you're not out of order, but you had already gone over your four minutes when you went down last time. Um, I, I'll give you thirty seconds, but we need to move on. And you'd have, you'd have to come back to the microphone.
Okay. I'll come back to the microphone.
You want my name again?
Uh, we should be good, but I appreciate it.
Okay. Phil Ziole, two oh four Darwin, two four two oh four Darwin. Originally, they said that they were going to plant twenty-four-foot-tall trees. Now, he said today, they're going to be eighteen to twenty-foot tall. Is he lying then, or is he lying now?
Okay. Can I, can I respond to a couple of this?
Well, we'll, we'll get to it.
That's what he said.
Sir? We'll, we'll get to it. Just, just a moment.
Okay.
Anyone else? Uh, hearing none. Uh, with no objection, I'm going to close the public portion and bring it back to the board. We had a number of comments, obviously, Mr. Box. Um, some of them, I think, were with regards to the gas station, which, um, is not to say that that might not be a concern, but certainly not what we're here for this evening. Um, were there? I have some notes, but were there, was there anything you wanted to address specifically there?
You're right. Most of them are, are planning commission questions when they, when they come in with the site plan, uh, that would be addressed. I, I, the meeting minutes from Twenty-Six Mile and Romeo Plank Dairy Queen, that was before my time. I'm not familiar with that, so I, I don't know which piece of property that is. I don't know if three hundred fo, of, of separation was even possible there. I have no idea on that one. With regards to the Dairy Queen and the Wendy's, Wendy's does have a call box that faces Hall Road. That's actually Tim Horton's call box. There's a, a second call box on the backside of Wendy's that is about fifty feet from the residential property line. But again, that was a consent judgment that was not approved through the ZVA process.
Okay. I think a pertinent question that I had was just, there was a question on the types of uses that would be allowed. And I think specifically, a, a medical marijuana establishment was referenced. Is that allowed in the C-two zoning?
That's not allowed in Macomb Township.
Okay. Very good. Uh, so typically, within a C-two zoning, we're looking at standard commercial, uh, strip centers, and then you also have gas stations and-
Correct.
And resident, uh, restaurants. One of the questions I did have that came up, uh, was the comment of no wall along the north side of the property line. I believe it at Butts Residential. Would not it require a wall on the north property line?
It would be required, and it, it looks like they have it on their plan. Six-foot decorative, they have a black line to me that encompasses the entire-
Mr. Chairman, I don't think they were talking about the wall. I think they were talking about vegetation. About vegetation. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Piper. Thank you. And we don't require, as a matter of course, as a matter of the ordinance, vegetation that would be, uh, based on how we chose to handle this and what they were offering in their packet. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, I think. Flipped my page the wrong way. I did want to speak briefly to past variances. I believe I was there for that variance request, and I've been around for multiple other call boxes. And to my knowledge, none of them were a same situation, uh, as this. Um, I recall particularly one variance request several years ago along Hall Road where the, uh, petitioner was rather upset that it wasn't granted. However, in that particular location, the petitioner could put a call box within the ordinance. And the reason his variance was denied was because he had the opportunity to meet the ordinance, and he didn't. Um, it is a standard we've stuck with pretty strongly over the years. Uh, and I'm not sure what we're, we're going to be doing here tonight. But I will say that in the cases that I've seen it, in all the cases that I've seen it, uh, the petitioners were able to meet the standard, and they chose not to, and we denied it in all those cases, with the possible exception of twenty-three and Card, which I believe did end up getting granted because of the wetlands that was additionally separating from the-
Correct.
From the residents. So, um, I can certainly understand reading the, reading the, uh, the minutes, but there are differences, and, and that's why we're sitting here. And then the last thing I just wanted to mention briefly, and not to speak to, I think, the wider suggestion here, but, um, none of us on this board are elected officials. We do not campaign. We do not need campaign funds. We are appointed. So, um, I would just mention that, uh, you know, campaign funds to us wouldn't be very helpful. Uh, and we try not to, uh, we, we try not to, uh, to, to worry about that or, or think about it because it's, it's not part of our job or, or anything of that nature. So, um, and then the last thing, I believe, sir, you mentioned that the twenty-four-foot trees. Um, it is a good point. Um, I don't remember them saying shorter, and, and, uh, the petitioner here might mention it, but the board has the opportunity to put in the height of the trees as a, as a, as part of our motion. And at that point, they would have to meet it. It wouldn't matter what they said now or later or whatever. It would be a part of the motion. So, if we were to grant the variance, and we believe that the height of the trees was a difference, it would be an incumbent on us to do that correctly. And if we did it correctly, then that's how it gets enforced, not what is said here. And that goes for some of the other things, you know? We don't, we don't necessarily make our decision based upon every comment that is made. So, petitioner may say something's louder or something's quieter. That doesn't mean that that's what we're basing our judgment off of. So, um, that being said, is there any other questions or comments for Mr. Box, Mr. Lawyer, petitioner? Actually, I think the petitioner did have one comment you wanted to make. Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I, I wanted to address, um, his comment, and then specifically the trees. I, I did say that. I'm not a liar. I don't appreciate it being called a liar. I came in here, put my best foot forward. It, it, it's in the paper. I said it. What I was specifically referring to was, I believe, Norma Markwood's house, her house being elevated, and the wall only being two feet in which the rest of the property lines would benefit from that wall. Their properties are lower. That wall would be higher. Specifically, we said that we'd be willing to put the twenty-four-foot trees in that area to block her view from the development. That's what we were talking about.
So, to clarify, your general, your general proposal was to do shorter trees around the perimeter, but in that case, because their, their, uh, level is higher, you're, you would, you're considering taller trees?
Correct. Eh, eh, and, and that's strictly because of availability. Those trees are very hard to get, and an eighteen-foot Norway spruce grows three feet a year. So, eventually, all of those trees would end up being twenty-four feet within a couple of years anyway.
Okay. All right. Uh, any other questions or comments from the board?
I, I just want to make one point. The other variance that he was referencing on Twenty-Six Mile was denied, and it was a seventy-four-foot variance request versus the size they have here. So, every one is different. Every fact is different. So, that's-
It is.
The board has to-
That's what main tenet of the ZBA is. Most of the stuff we look at is different. Thank you, Mr. Lawyer.
Yes. And the Dairy Queen did not go in in that instance.
Correct. Yeah. Any other questions from the board?
Do you have a couple of questions?
Mr. Custer.
If someone was to make a variance today with conditions on it, and we were to, uh, stipulate the size of the trees, the height of the trees, is there, or is there a tree that you would recommend from the staff, a height, um, that you would like to see along? Would be that be the west property line? Or should we leave that up to the, I mean, I don't want to, like you said, punt at the panic commission. I don't know if that's necessarily the, the answer.
I, I think any type of pine or, or spruce, something that's not going to shed its leaves in the fall as far as type of tree. I'm not sure that any one specific type is better than another. Um, and, and they do, you see the kind of staggered approach. Often, those trees then grow together, and, and the staggered approach is, is, you see it a lot, especially with arborvitae, uh, is, is a common screening element. Uh, as far as height goes, uh, I, I would think eighteen, twenty-foot, somewhere in that area would, would be sufficient. And to his point, they do grow rather quickly, uh, and they're going to grow, you know, several feet a year for, for several years. But starting off, I think eighteen, twenty, to eighteen to twenty feet, it would be sufficient.
Would it, would it be satisfactory to say the height requirement with the site plan ultimately approved by planning commission? The locations of them and things, obviously, we're not necessarily talking about locations and places today.
Correct. Yes.
I did actually have one more question, Mr. Box, with regards to stacking. Do we have a required stacking depth from the call box to the, to the secondary window? I think the petitioner mentioned that at one point. I wasn't sure if he had one.
I think there is, and I don't know that, that depth off the top of my head.
Do you know what that is?
Apologize. I just, multiple ordinances in my head, but typically, it's like five and five.
Five and five?
Yes. Five from the window to the call box, and then five behind the, the call box. So, we, we showed a total of ten.
Okay.
But I believe it was four and six previously, so slid it back twenty feet.
So, to clarify, right now, you have stacking, five going to the front of the building, to the very front of the building, and then the call box is situated within five spaces of that, which in theory would be the furthest toward the front that you could get it.
Correct. Yeah, five, five vehicles can stack from the pickup window backwards to the call box, and then five more from the call box back to the end of, of the stacking lane.
Actually, kind of looks in the drawing like, like it might be six.
Six and four.
Four. Six and four, yeah.
Because they moved it back 20 feet.
Although I think in this particular case, even if that was the case, I think it certainly is more to the spirit of the ordinance. Any other questions? With that, I will entertain motions. I would just make sure to remind anyone who makes the motion to please give your finding, the practical difficulty or the reasoning. And you shall proceed.
Mr. Chairman, I have trouble with this. To me, the ordinance is there for a reason. The fact that the property, I do see a practical difficulty that, because there's, the property's only 300 feet wide, but to me, it's a self-inflicted practical difficulty. They bought the property knowing that it was narrow and too narrow for our ordinance. And it's not, it's a significant narrowing that they're asking for, 133 feet. So with that, I would make a motion to reject this, this variance.
All right, motion by Mr. Piper to reject the variance, is there support? I think the motion dies for lack of support. Are there any other motions?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion as well. Well, I appreciate what Member Piper's saying. I do see a practical difficulty because the property is a smaller size and that is the reason why the petitioner is here is because a variance is needed if they're going to fit something on this property. So seeing the practical difficulty with the size and the shape of the lot, I would make a recommendation to approve variance, the variance for property 0836452022 with regards to section 10 dot 1603B33A with the following conditions, that the drive-through hours are from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. as proposed by the petitioner, that the height of the pine trees along the west side of the property be a minimum 18 feet in height when planted, also a minimum 24 feet height at the higher property proposed by the petitioner, and that ultimately, taking these conditions into consideration, that the final site plan be approved by the planning commission.
Can I interject real quick? I don't mean to be out of order here.
I think we have to take, we have to check for a second first. Give us, give us just a second.
The hours of operation?
I noted it.
I just want to be fair to.
I noted it, yes. Is there support?
I would support that.
Support by Mr. De Bruin. I believe we do have some conversation as the petitioner mentioned. I think that he had offered seven to eight. You had mentioned seven to nine. Do you want to maintain seven to nine in your motion?
No, I will change my motion to seven, eight, I apologize, I wrote down the wrong number.
No worries. And then just a question to Mr. Box. Do we need to reference the additional, the additional fence and the landscape buffer in the variance if we want that to be bound by it?
I would think so, yeah.
Maybe, maybe per the, per the layout that was given.
Good catch. I would also add a condition, if possible, to require the wood fence and brush row that is proposed in the site plan we are seeing today to surround the existing call box to reduce, to further reduce the sound impact.
All right, and Mr. De Bruin, do you still support that motion?
I do.
All right. Motion by Mr. De Costa, support by Mr. De Bruin, a lot of different portions of this here. Is there any further discussion? Thanks, Mr. De Costa, it's a difficult motion to make. Hearing no discussion, Ms. Lawson, I think we're going to call the roll on this one and would you please call the roll?
Okay, I will start with Member De Costa.
Yes.
Member De Bruin?
Yes.
Member Piper?
No.
Member Tuckfield?
Yes.
And Member Lawson is yes.
All right, that motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you to the residents who came and we hope to keep things moving forward. Get my agenda back up here. The next item on the agenda is new business. We do not have any new business this evening. So I'm going to move on to item nine, which is public comments. We do have another public comment period that is open here if you wish to speak. Again, it's four minutes and you can come to the podium and give any comments that you might have. It's like everyone is leaving or has left, so without any further objection, I'm going to close the public comment portion, move on to ZBA member comments. Any comments this evening?
I have a couple, sorry.
Have a good evening.
We talked, forgive me if I'm out of line here. We talked a couple of months ago about reviewing the bylaws. We never did that, did we? Okay. Are we still planning, I know we were working out, I think the planning commission was working on theirs or something. We are, I guess, a new five-member board with our new members. It's something we should maybe review again next month if all members are present.
Yeah, I'd be happy to put that on the agenda. Planning Commission did go through theirs and made some changes. And I did, I do believe I sent out some possible changes for yours as well. But yeah, I can put that back on the agenda for next month if you'd like.
Yeah, and Mr. De Costa, I think Mr. Box and I had talked last meeting. There's also some potential processes we need to make sure we have with the alternate members, who gets called, what order. We want to make sure that nobody gets, nobody complains about, hey, you picked this person when you could have picked that person to come. So we want to make sure that's kind of lined up and set in place, so.
Yeah, we did quite a bit of work on the planning commission that got approved. We had several meetings. I think I would need to go through, and I plan to do that, go through the current ZBA bylaws, update them based on the statute and what's required. And then we can propose that to ZBA, we can discuss it and, you know, January may be a good time to do that, so.
Maybe with the holidays, maybe it's February. Well, I don't, are you planning on a?
There will be a meeting in January, yep.
We can, we can do in February, it's fine. I mean, yeah, I appreciate, I appreciate that and it's been one of those things that we need to do, but there's been a lot going on this last year with the, all the new administration and a lot of development. So it's a good time right now over the winter to visit it.
And Mr. Loyah, I know we've talked about this a couple of times, but obviously when you're reading through it, if you can read through the FOIA section we have on there, make sure we're all on the same page and how that's written out.
Yes, I agree with you, that's fine.
Very good. Other comments, Mr. De Costa?
No, almost it, thank you.
Anyone else?
Oh, well, just one real quick, I want to thank everyone that did show up for the bottle and can drive that we had. It was the last one for the year. Mr. Box himself actually came with a bag of bottles for us. Even though we're not doing any more, we don't have any schedule till next March because of winter weather and such, we do still collect them if people want pickups. Our president's number, I forgot my cellphone at home, so I don't have his number with me. But if you go on the Friends of Macomb Township Facebook page, information is there. If you want a pickup, you can call or text that number and we'll be happy to get them because it's an ongoing thing. We're raising money for the Glenn Peters School and for our scholarship program, so. Appreciate all the support the people have given us. We've raised this past year, I think, over $17,000 through those bottle and can drives. We've been doing.
A lot of bottles.
Yeah, I personally have taken back about $10,000 worth of them.
That's a lot of bottles.
Yeah. But I appreciate the support that the community has given us. It, it kept us going. We would have had to have folded and stopped our programs without it, so it was good.
Very good, and thanks for all the time I know you spend on that, Mr. Piper. It's a lot of work and I'm sure people, everyone appreciates it. I just wanted to welcome Mr. De Bruin. He was here digitally last time, but glad to have you on board. And also just to mention, I believe, after I asked Ms. Faustic how to pronounce her name last meeting, I managed to mispronounce it the entire rest of the meeting, so. I just want to throw it out there that hopefully the next time she's here, I'll remember how to say it a little better. With that, just want to wish everyone happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. We probably won't see each other until after that and so I just want to say that and look forward to seeing you next year.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we will move on to planning director comments. Mr. Box, anything from you this evening?
No, the other thing I was going to touch on, I think, will be something that's addressed when we review the bylaws. But with regards to the alternate members, I think the best approach would be whoever has, you know, on a yearly basis, whoever's, whichever alternate has been there the fewest times would be the first one asked. So not necessarily who, who did it last, then go to the next one because if one person did three in a row and then the other one was there, they're still down three to one, if you will. They would still be the first one asked the next time. That would be my suggestion for an approach.
That would make sense and it would also be easy to document.
Yep.
Easy to, easy to keep track of, makes sense. Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
No, you're not on the agenda, Mr. Loyah, anything from you?
Nothing, just happy holidays, everybody.
Very good. All right, with that, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Ms. Lawson, is there support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Piper, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying nay. At 7:28, we stand adjourned.